On the order of the regular meeting of the Real Del City Council, roll call this. We are, there's nothing to report out in closed session, from closed session, please stand for the public attendance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations, this is the time for persons who wish to address the council on matters not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Brown Act. Items requiring council action that are listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by the council that makes two thirds of the council, that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Here, we will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Does anyone on the council like to pull anything to the consent calendar? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. So, yeah, motion is there second, second, yeah, motion is second, vote, motion carries five zero. Reports and staff communications, city map page sixty seven in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So tomorrow, I believe we should be seeing the start of work on Elm Street, the Elm Street paving project. Once there was the latest update today, okay, so we're still good for tomorrow. And so we'll should expect some level of disruption, there's a little bit of work that needs to be done at Wildwood. We're still working with the contractors, see if we can get them to do some spot repairs here at City Hall, the parking lot, and also on Center Street. So hopefully we'll be able, we'll be able to see those into the, to the project timeline. And then also, as the council is aware, June tenth, we have the trail opening ceremony at ten thirty in the morning with the school kids who will be attending, but it's also an open public event since, so council members, there's a public urge to attend. To know with that, I will go ahead and happy to answer any questions the council may have and return back to the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, city manager, and I hope everyone who can possibly be there on the tenth is there. We need to celebrate the children from Real Del School District, Cal fans will be there and it should be really happy, as I may be so happy. It should be a very happy event, so, May from tenth.
No questions, I'm just gonna point out once again, page seventy one, we have zero cash transport access standards, I guess that's what I just pointed out. Now, do we have, is it, are these the same two dogs from last time, or is it exactly?
There are none.
Two different dogs, okay, but still no cats, okay. And then just, spare your pets, we have hunters, go get them in the resource center, that's, okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, councilor Orr.
No question.
Councilman Woodall, chief.
I was talking this Saturday, and she was telling me about the blue envelope program.
Yes.
And I'm glad that the city wants to be involved in it, can you tell us a little bit more about it?
Yes, the blue envelope program is a non-registry program designed to improve interactions between first responders, emergency medical services, and people with disabilities. So the idea of the program is people can come if they want to participate and pick up some type of swag and no cost to them, such as bumper stickers, stickers for their home windows, bracelets, T-shirt covers. So the idea that if they get stopped on a traffic stop or there's some sort of an emergency and first responders are coming, they can clue up by saying the blue envelope, et cetera, and ask for their blue envelope, and in that they have their diagnosis, potential triggers, special needs accommodations to improve the level of service they get and the outcome of interactions between leads, fire, EMS, and people with disabilities.
We're gonna have a car up there?
We're gonna have a car, we've got a fire truck there, we're getting multiple active seat groups are participating, I'm very excited to be hosting this at the beauty center.
We're gonna have hot dogs.
And brownies.
And brownies.
And brownies.
Chai brownies. I think it's a great program, I'm glad that you guys wanted to be part of it.
Thanks, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up, because that did need to be elevated to, to the greater communities, so thank you, and thank you, seriously. Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, no questions.
Okay, and I just wanted to thank public works. I've had numerous people say, thank you for filling up those potholes and, you know, it's just been some nicer drives around, and thank you for doing that. Thank you, the guys, billions.
Should have.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Any questions, any hand raised, any emails? We will close the staff communications and move on to special study sessions. Presentation, adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, operating a capital budget, page seventy two in our packets. City manager, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, and members of the council, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over as Rosa sets up to her point here, to our finance director, Mr. Travis Sandborn.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor Garance and council members. As we approach the end of our current fiscal year, I'm pleased to present the recommended budget that reflects our city's priorities and financial planning for the year ahead. Our budget development process follows a structured four-month timeline that ensures careful planning and thorough review. We begin in March when department heads receive budget worksheets and start planning their needs for the coming year. In April, the departments submit their funding request, which our finance team carefully reviews and analyzes. By May, we create the initial draft budget and present it to the city manager for approval. Finally, in June, we present the recommended budget to you, the city council, for your consideration. This systematic approach ensures that every dollar is carefully considered before being presented to you for approval. The new fiscal year will begin on July first. During your May twentieth and twenty seventh meetings, the council established five key priorities that will guide our spending for the coming year. These priorities focus on public safety and to ensure adequate police coverage for our communities. Economic development plan execution to move forward with our plans to grow local economy, public works infrastructure projects, maintain and improve our roads, water, and sewer systems, and police department personnel to support our law enforcement team. Parks and youth programs to invest in recreation and youth development as well. New priorities are reflected throughout this budget and guide how we allocate our resources. Our total recommended budget is seventeen point four million dollars. This money is divided into three main categories. First, we have operating expenses, which cover our day-to-day costs like salaries, utilities, and supplies. Second, we have debt service payments, which represent payments on money we borrowed for past projects or owed to third parties, such as HDA payments via our TDA allocation. And third, we have capital of special projects, which fund major infrastructure improvements and on-time initiatives. On the revenue side, we project fifteen point eight million dollars coming in for the next fiscal year. To balance our budget, we'll utilize one point seven million dollars from our unassigned fund balances, which includes a complete drawdown of the city's ARPA money received during COVID times. The recommended budget is two point one million dollars smaller than last fiscal year. This decrease primarily results from the completion of significant projects that have been underway for several years. We completed the Gill River Trail to become a popular community asset. We're also well underway with the major, major water infrastructure project, over twelve million dollars that was funded by a state grant through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. When a newly enlarged onetime project's from considerations, our most considerable ongoing expense remains the police department, with the budget exceeding one point five million dollars. This makes sense as public safety remains the city's top priority, as established by the city council. Our total projected revenue for the coming fiscal year is fifteen point eight million dollars, which represents a decrease of two point four million compared to last year. This decrease mirrors our spending reduction and primarily reflects the completion of grant-funded capital projects, which means we receive less grant reimbursement money as these major projects come to a close. We also anticipate a decrease in our measure of tax revenue due to a quarter percent reduction that took effect in January twenty twenty five. The general fund primarily relies on four primary revenue sources. Property taxes come from taxes on investment businesses in our city. We also receive property tax and motor vehicle license fees, which is state money that replaces all the car registration fees. Sales tax provides with the portion of the taxes collected on purchases made in our city, and our licensed cannabis businesses generate cannabis tax revenue. Our general fund total for the coming year is projected at one point seven million dollars, which represents an increase of approximately fifty six thousand dollars compared to last year. This anticipated growth is primarily due to increased property taxes and motor vehicle license fees, which have actually risen over the past few years. General fund revenues were in a declining pattern from fiscal year twenty twenty one through twenty three, twenty four, and our revenues have now stabilized and are projected to increase for a third consecutive fiscal year, as displayed in our chart on the screen. The general fund serves as our primary operating fund, providing financial resources for essential services and core operations. Since revenues within the general fund are unrestricted, we can allocate them towards various areas, including police services, general government operations and management, and specific capital projects. For the upcoming fiscal year, the general fund is budgeted at one point eight six million dollars. Police services represent our largest funding allocation, accounting for one point three million, or sixty seven percent of the total general fund budget. This significant investment reflects our community's priority on public safety. The city administration accounts for eleven percent of the budget, and capital projects are allocated three percent of the budget for infrastructure improvements. The remaining nineteen percent supports various other city operations and services. Our capital projects budget allocates just over twelve million dollars for various infrastructure and special projects throughout the city. These are significant improvements that will benefit our community for years to come. Funding for these projects comes from several designated sources, including general funds, our motor pool fund for vehicle purchases, the park's capital fund, which supports projects like the Gill River Trail, the SV one fund, which uses state gas tax funding specifically dedicated to street and road work, and the ARPA fund, which utilizes federal COVID relief funds and our sewer and water capital project allocations. This year's capital project budget represents a decrease of over two million dollars compared to last year, primarily because we're completing rather than starting major projects. The water distribution system project is a primary driver of our capital spending, accounting for over ten million dollars of the allocated funds. This project represents major upgrades to ensure safe, reliable water service for our entire community. The organization chart illustrates how your city government operates and how its various components interact with one another. Citizens form the foundation of our government structure. The public elects city council members who represent their interests and establish policy for the city. The planning commission consists of citizens appointed by the council to serve in an advisory role, offering recommendations on matters related to development and land use. City staff encompasses the employee's responsibility for the day-to-day operations of city government, ensuring the smooth functioning of various departments. We also work with contractors or external companies or individuals we hire to perform specific tasks or provide specialized services such as engineering or vehicle counseling. This structure ensures that citizen input flows through your elected representatives to guide city operations effectively. The city of Real Del has budgeted a total of twenty three point zero five equivalent full-time employees for the fiscal years twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. This represents a decrease of a little less than one full-time employee compared to the previous fiscal year. These adjustments help us maintain essential services while being fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. I want to thank the city council for participating in this process and their continued commitment to fiscal responsibility. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank city of Real Del staff for their support in building the budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Diane, just off the right, Chris Sandborn, awesome presentation, and thank you for everything you've done. I know it's like your time of year when you've got to really be focused and, so we appreciate that. And everybody, all the staff who had the input to get to Travis, so thank you. Uh, the council member Orr.
No question for you.
Councilman Wilson?
I have any questions.
Councilman Woodall? No questions, but I want to thank you also, because we were so good about any time I come into your office, giving me answers, and I appreciate the whole staff, and I think this is great, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
May from ten?
No questions, but I, I just want to pin you back and say, it's, it's nice to be able to trust our city staff. I really do trust you all, and that is a big tip off, so, thank you.
Any questions from the public?
Thank you, um, young lady, any emails?
So, I'm thinking about what probably could go sixty, about that, I don't know. Seventy two. And then I thought you said you said the name, I thought you'd be wrong. And city manager, is this, can it be approved, or are we just taking in information?
I'm sorry, look, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I was just asking, is this, can we make a motion to approve, or do we, is this just informational?
Uh, no, this is an action item, so on, uh,
Yeah.
So it'll be two.
I know.
So the recommended action would be to approve resolution sixteen thirty eight dash twenty twenty five, adopting the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six operating capital budget imposition allocation two.
Is there a motion?
I would, I would be glad to make that motion, second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the budget, we vote, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to special call items. Appointment of an ad hoc committee related to economic development, page ninety six in our packets. Thank you, Susan, there we are.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So the, the city council last appointed an economic development ad hoc in December of twenty twenty. That ad hoc ultimately led to the creation of the current economic development strategy, which is on the following pages of your agenda item. Uh, and so based on our annual primary setting session, there was a discussion about updating the plan. And so we are recommending that the council appoint a new ad hoc to work with staff on an update of the current plan and implementation priorities. Uh, so work of, uh, this ad hoc and any ad hoc obviously was returned back to the full council for any actionable items that need the council's consideration or approval. Um, and so we are looking for two members of the city council to work with staff on this, on this update. And then the timeline for this is really kind of determined by the ad hoc, it could be a series of a couple meetings over a month, or this could, you know, go for quite a while. Uh, but we want to, you know, gear it up so that we have a kind of the next phase of our strategy. So again, two members from the city council, thank you, man.
Thank you, um, city manager. So, my inclination would be Mayor Colton, myself, but. So, yeah, but. So I guess we have to, I'm gonna decide.
You do what you want.
Yeah, so. Yes, we're gonna hold that. Let me say. So. Do you want me to make a case for myself, or make a case for myself, since they're good to send us?
So Karen, can you help with that?
Yeah, so is it up to the mayor to make the appointment, or the city council? I think the consensus is of the council, I won't done it both ways.
That's my fun.
And, you know, I, so if we've done it both ways, it can, it can go both, both ways, I wouldn't.
Pleasure, the council.
I would recommend that, uh, that the council have a discussion about the membership and then make a, make a vote on, on membership.
So I did you want to? Um, I, obviously I want to do this, I have a lot of ideas already, and I think that I am young and I have a ton of energy, and the Spade Nutter program is going really well, so I have a little bit more space and time for this. Um, and I just, I think I'd be really good at it, so that's why I want to do it.
And I, do you, do you know the next, right, because I was the last?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't on the last one, but I'd like to get on this one. Uh, economic development is a big deal, we really need to do something, I'll say it again, it can be good, but it is a fight, it is a. That we need to. You know, we need to fix it, man.
Right, and, and my feeling is, like, that was literally, the economic development was literally my number one. It was practically my only focus, because everything else falls from that. And so that's why, I mean, I, I do have some ideas, I do want Real Del, I do understand that we've got to sort something out in order to move forward, so, um, so that, that's my position, is that, so I guess it becomes now a vote because we said that, so I'm old. No, and she didn't make that, she didn't make that, I mean, no.
You can't slow me down, I don't sleep at night, I got all kinds of stuff, I bring it in peace, I know, I know.
So, um, so basically, we can all agree on the matter. So basically, I guess we're just trying to sort who we want, and as a.
Want to do it, I'll, I'll defer to you.
Because I, I mean, I really, really, really do want it, I mean, truthfully.
But I defer to you, you know.
That's so awesome, thank you, Brian, thank you for, thank you very much, so do you want a motion, or do we have to do?
There should be a motion, yes.
Okay, I make the motion, the, the mayor and Amanda are on the ad hoc committee, second. A motion is the second. Did you want to be a?
No.
Oh, you're, oh, yeah.
I didn't agree with to that arm.
Oh, you just, oh. Oh, okay, well, that's fair, so motion carries for one. Okay. Now we will move on to ordinances and special resolutions. Introduction and birth greeting by title only of ordinance number four one seven, two zero, two five, banning the sale of nitrous, nitrous oxide in the city of Real Del. Page one oh four in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So this has been something in discussion at the staff level for quite a while, in concert with our partners at County Public Health and the other cities as well. Um, so back on August twentieth, twenty twenty four, the Real Del City Council held a meeting to discuss, just informally, the banning of nitrous oxide in the city of Real Del. Uh, at that point in time, the consensus of the council was for staff to return with the ordinance, banning nitrous oxide. Um, since that meeting, again, staff has been working with the public health division, the county public, and our neighboring jurisdictions to craft and unify ordinance, uh, so that there's kind of interoperability and no major differences between the, the various, uh, the various ordinances. the various ordinances across the jurisdiction. So we do anticipate that, uh, this ordinance will be adopted by all seven cities and I believe that the council adopted it, or excuse me, the board of supervisors uh, adopted it today, um, at their second reading. Um, so, uh, we do have, uh, some folks here from public health, Jay and Katie uh, to, uh, to discuss and answer any questions that the council has. They do have a, a presentation, uh, and so if, uh, Jay and or Katie would like to come up and give a presentation, I'm sure the council would appreciate. So, welcome to, uh, Rio de Janeiro.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Um, I have copies of the slide deck um, that I can pass around to everyone. And then also, public health has completed a yes, you guys have a great tale, landscape analysis. Perfect.
And then we have a slide deck.
Thank you.
Our, our system that, uh, takes longer than it normally would, but it's getting pulled up right now.
Perfect. Um, thank you for this opportunity to present about public health's work on recreational landscape oxide. My name is Katie Jo Slaughter. I am an interim program services coordinator in the healthy communities division of public health. I am the supervisor for our substance use prevention program and I'm here today with Jay. I will let him introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Jay Zito and I'm section for the health and social policy institute. He's, he's dressing, uh, nicotine and work in, uh, the jurisdictions in Humboldt County on, uh, nicotine issues and, uh, tobacco retail licensing as well as at this time looking at nitrous oxide and tobacco retailer outlets.
And so I'm going to just briefly give you a background of what nitrous oxide is as a substance. Um, and just to note scattered throughout this slide deck are photos that our staff have captured of nitrous oxide glitter in our community. And you can see the captions tell you where we saw it. Um, so nitrous oxide, um, is a colorless gas that does have intended um, appropriate use in medical and dental and pharmaceutical settings. What we're talking about is the recreational use of nitrous oxide, so illicit use um, intended for folks to get high. Um, and it has a variety of short-term and long-term effects. The next slide will tell you a little bit more about the short-term effects. I think commonly, um, most people are familiar with the dizziness and lightheadedness, sometimes passing out. Um, it can also cause, um, a variety of other symptoms which are listed here on the slide. Um, and then next for the long-term effects. And so nitrous oxide is not harmless and has um, there are research studies, we are using one from the Alcohol and Drug Foundation that shows some of the possible long-term effects of recreational substance use, which include memory loss, vitamin B twelve depletion, numbness in hands and feet, neurological damage. This isn't the complete list on the slide, but you can refer to it. And then I just wanted to point out, I actually captured the photo in this slide on a hike um, at the mouth of Mandons and River, not far from here, near Alton. Um, next. Um, and, uh, thankfully, this is the only presentation where we've actually had a live representation of these products. Um, and so this is a tank of nitrous oxide. Um, Jay and I decided we would consider this a large size tank, but you'll see at the bottom. So this is a tank that will dispense a steady stream of gas. Um, and in our retail environment in Humboldt County, you will find small to extra-large containers, tanks like this. Um, more historically, you would see the canisters, which are the small metal cartridges that are loaded into a cracker and you are dispensing gas via the cracker. Um, the tanks allow for a steady, much larger, tighter volume of gas being dispensed than the canisters and the crackers. Next. Um, so public health has been working on recreational nitrous oxide um, for longer than the timeline on this slide, but we really started actively engaging with this um, in January twenty twenty four. Um, this work was, uh, public health was directed to do this work by the board of supervisors. Um, by June twenty twenty four, one of my programs, substance use prevention, had secured state funding to do this work. Um, and we landed on doing a recreational nitrous oxide retail landscape analysis. We are going to present the results of the data we collected during that analysis and talk a little bit about nitrous oxide sales that we observed in the Eel River Valley. Um, we teamed up with partners to do, um, the landscape analysis, including Jay, who actually did the retail observations throughout the Eel River Valley. Um, we have been to the board of supervisors. Um, thank you Kyle for noting that the board of supervisors did adopt their standalone nitrous oxide ordinance today as well as an amendment to the tobacco retail licensing ordinance in unincorporated areas of Humboldt to include nitrous oxide. Um, we have presented to the Arcata City Council and Jay and I will be at another city council meeting in Ferndale later this month. Next. And so to start talking about the actual retail landscape analysis, here is our observation timeline. So between, um, October twenty twenty four and April twenty twenty five, um, our collective team of public health and our partners from Hasby Can visited a hundred and forty-four retail outlets throughout Humboldt County. Um, this work included observations in unincorporated and incorporated areas of Humboldt County. We, it does not include observations in our tribal areas. They are sovereign nations and we, public health, do not have jurisdiction in their areas. Okay, next. Okay, so we observed nitrous oxide products in twenty-four of the hundred and forty-four retail outlets. What's really important to note here is that our staff for our safety did what's called located in plain sight observations. So we walked in and we looked what we could see to the visible eye. We were not going into back rooms. We were not looking for hidden areas. Um, so we don't have data on if the retail outlets are selling nitrous oxide in back rooms, closed cabinets or hidden areas. These are our outlets where you, anyone, any member of the community walks into this retail establishment and there is nitrous oxide to the, like, right, uh, front and center. Um, and so eighteen of these retail outlets had the crackers, the canisters and the tanks. Um, five of those outlets had only the crackers and canisters. Um, one of them only had the little canisters. Um, overall, we did not disclose these observations. Um, but at thirty-four of the hundred and forty-four retail outlets, we have established working relationships with our tobacco retailers and were able to actually talk to them about the work that public health is doing on nitrous and they actually were very helpful and supportive to that work. But at the majority of the outlets, the observations were undisclosed. Next. So here's a chart that shows you, um, a breakdown of the types of stores where we found nitrous oxide. So the majority of the stores we found in Humboldt selling nitrous oxide were smoke shops. So eighteen smoke shops were selling nitrous. We have three independent stores that were selling nitrous, two glass floor studios that also sell tobacco and one sex shop. Um, we have a corner market in one city jurisdiction that sells nitrous, a home goods store um, in one city jurisdiction that was selling, um, nitrous we anticipated was for home-based culinary use. Um, because another use of nitrous oxide is to make whipped cream. Um, and that's what the canister and the crackers are for. And then we have one chef store in the safety corridor between Eureka and Arcata that only sells nitrous oxide for culinary use to folks with an appropriate business license. And next, and I'm going to also let Jay start chiming in here because he actually did the observations in the ERV. So this is our data from the Eel River Valley. And so we're talking about Scotia, Rio de Janeiro, Fortuna and Ferndale. Um, and so we visited twenty retail outlets throughout the Eel River Valley and I'm going to let Jay step in to talk more about that work. All right.
Yeah, so this was done in February of, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-five. And, uh, we went, it was, uh, one day, one and a half days that we went to, um, these, uh, different tobacco, tobacco retailers and other types of retailers. Sorry. Um, and so there were three, um, smoke shops in Fortuna. Um, and then there were, that, um, all sold, there was nitrous like right when you like walked in. Um, and then there was other retailers, um, there, like, the gas stations, um, other, um, you know, like Safeways, that type. Um, there wasn't any, uh, nitrous like out, like, sold like there was in the, the smoke shop areas. And that was kind of across the board for most of, um, Humboldt County is the, where the smoke shops is the concentration of, uh, nitrous being sold. And usually it's sold like, uh, if they're standing here, it's like on the ground right next to them. So if they, they can step in front of it, they don't want it seen or step to the side if they do want it seen. And some it wasn't, there wasn't even any kind of like hidden element. It was just out, out in the open being sold. Um, so there, you know, in Rio de Janeiro, there wasn't, uh, we didn't find anyone selling it openly. Um, but, um, we did have some anecdotal evidence that there, um, maybe a retailer in Rio de Janeiro that may be selling it, but it was out of the site at the time, um, then we went into the, uh, retailer store. So.
Yeah, and just, um, we already talked about this, but we did find one home goods store in Ferndale that's, um, represented in the graph that was selling, um, limited nitrous oxide products, a canister and cracker set that we, um, assumed was for home-based culinary use. Um, and then we know from community members that we have heard that they believe that um, folks from other jurisdictions in the Eel River Valley will travel to Fortuna to purchase nitrous oxide products. Okay, next. Um, so key findings from our retail landscape, our overall retail landscape analysis. Um, so our smoke shops and tobacco retail outlets that are selling nitrous oxide also tend to have a larger variety of flavored nicotine and tobacco products, which are currently banned by the state. Um, and then we heard a lot of anecdotal evidence that what we found in plain sight may be the tip of the iceberg and that these outlets that have nitrous oxide in plain sight may have more nitrous oxide in back rooms, behind closed doors and locked cabinets. So what we found is probably the lowest hanging fruit and there may be more nitrous oxide in our retail environment. Um, Kyle talked about the policy development. So public health is recommending and has been working with the city jurisdictions and the county to have a unified policy approach between the county and the seven city jurisdictions. Um, the Humboldt County, like I said just today, um, adopted their standalone nitrous oxide ordinance and amending our current countywide tobacco real, tail licensing ordinance to reference nitrous oxide. Um, and we have presented at the city of Arcata. They are considering a standalone nitrous oxide ordinance. Um, and then our team has been doing work to present to our tribal partners about this work. Um, and we presented to the U, United Indian Health Services Board of Directors in April about our work on recreational nitrous oxide.
Yeah, and then especially in, in light of with the state flavor ban. And then I'm like, I'm Europe tribal member and I worked with my tribal tobacco policies last five years. And one of the things that happens with the flavor ban is now there's, there's tribes that are now selling, uh, flavored tobacco that weren't in the past. So if we're going about this, like, making sure that tribes are on board as well so that it's not being sold on reservations or in stores and along with like flavored tobacco and things like that. So trying to work on, on the policy. Um, not just across the jurisdictions that are, you know, cities, but also tribal jurisdictions too. So we're trying to, to, to look at that as well. So we don't have islands.
Next. A little bit about the county's nitrous oxide ordinance because again, um, we are hoping for a unified policy campaign around nitrous oxide. Um, so the county ordinance is a ban on the sale of nitrous oxide and all associated paraphernalia. There are no exceptions for culinary nitrous or automotive nitrous. Um, it is still, there is exceptions for medical, dental, pharmaceutical use of nitrous in appropriate settings. Um, and then of course for a grocery store that are Costco, that's selling your cans, prepackaged cans of whipped cream, those are still permissible under the ordinance. Um, there are various levels of enforcement that go from a misdemeanor, public nuisance is included. Four jurisdictions that also have a tobacco retail license. Um, it can involve the revocation of your Humboldt County business license and your tobacco retail license. Um, if a jurisdiction does not also have a concurrent, um, tobacco retail license, then those would not apply. If you're just adopting a standalone nitrous oxide ordinance. Um, and I think we're going to talk about the TRL, the tobacco retail license ordinance, ordinance next. Yeah. Um, I know we have presented to your council before about public health's work on tobacco retail licensing. Um, currently in Humboldt, the county is the only jurisdiction with, uh, tobacco retail licensing ordinance, although the city, some of the city jurisdictions are considering their own TRLs as they are also called. So the counties was adopted in July twenty twenty-three. And the purpose of the, these ordinances are really to reduce the availability of tobacco for youth in the community. It also provides us local control for all the local, state and federal tobacco laws that are coming into Humboldt County, including the flavor ban. Um, and under the county's TRL ordinance, public health's division of environmental health provides the enforcement for the TRL. Um, and so the amendment, um, it, to the existing TRL for the county, it references the nitrous oxide ordinance and it provides those additional layers of enforcement I talked about where if a tobacco retailer is also selling nitrous oxide, um, they can lose their Humboldt County business license and their tobacco retail license that allows them to sell tobacco in Humboldt. And then these, we just, our final two slides are acknowledgement. This has been a collective community effort. We have had a lot of support, um, along the way. Um, this is all the people that we want to acknowledge for supporting this work, including your police department. Thank you. Um, yeah, and then we have some resources that were cited in the sl- references that were cited, set, sorry, that were cited in the slide deck if you want more to really dive into the research. And now, um, if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Presentation was very thorough and, um, your point was very passionately made. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah. Obviously we know who sell that in, in Rio de Janeiro. Um, are you going to be able to enforce, I thought the chief? Are we going to be able to, um, enforce this if they're not going to do it?
I guess with the passing of this ordinance, we will be able to enforce that.
What can you do on that? If you catch them with uh, not out of the camera, but they're going to sound like if they're out there.
Business? Business referring to Councilmember Wilson, uh, also has an alcohol license, which is ground for inspection of the entire premises. So it opens up the entire business to law enforcement inspection.
So you can revoke that license?
Yeah, we can submit that to ABC for revocation. We can, uh, issue administrative citations uh, as well as potential misdemeanor arrests.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Little. So you, you could kind of do like things like. So you could kind of do like stings like with the one when they send underage people in by river. So if, could you send somebody, anybody, since there's no age limit, in to buy a yes, nitrous and?
Yes, you can do that as well.
Okay. And is nitrous physically addicting or just, I mean, like a hard drug?
Yes, nitrous is a significant health and wellness concern throughout Humboldt County. Um, and we do know anecdotally from our county treatment providers that they are treating folks for nitrous, problematic nitrous oxide substance use. Um, and many local people in Humboldt have experienced friends and family members who have suffered with problematic nitrous oxide use.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wanda?
Um, has there been any discussion about how it can still be available to food service industry? Or is there a replacement available to them?
At this point, the county is recommending a total ban on nitrous oxide products. And I guess we would all be left with making whipped cream by hand.
You mean they would still have the bottles? It just, if you wanna make it from scratch?
If you want, yeah, oh, so yes, that's what I'm talking about. Yes, absolutely. So the nitrous oxide. Um, no, like I had said before, there is an exception for the prepackaged whipped cream that contains nitrous oxide as a propellant, like Ready Whip that you would buy probably a dollar general across the street. Um, but this is just, there would not be a provision that allows people to use nitrous oxide to make home-based whipped cream on their.
But like in a restaurant?
Not in a restaurant either.
Well, is there a potential for that later? I mean, just coming from a restaurant background and owning one, that's, that's a huge deal.
Thank you.
I understand. Um, there has definitely been feedback from the culinary industry already. Um, we, the county and I think some of the city jurisdictions are concerned and Public Health is concerned that culinary nitrous oxide is being diverted towards recreational use and sometimes to young people. So that's why we are recommending a total ban. So that um culinary nitrous oxide doesn't end up with young people and with folks who have problematic nitrous oxide use. And I, I don't believe that anyone is making whipped cream at home with a tank of this.
Hmm, cheers.
My question was Robert's question, so good answer. Thank you.
So is there, Elise and Nidel, is there a way, not that any, there is an actual restaurant here that would be in this category? I, I do have an issue with, it seems unreasonable to say a professional business can't use something that is used professionally in their business. That, that's bothersome.
Mayor Darn, if I may answer that.
Okay.
Uh, the ordinance uh before the council has exceptions built into it for restaurant use as well as unbilts. It is not specifically near the county's uh ordinance. So within the city of Riau del, you would build still, that's it for those purposes under this ordinance. And it could still be obtained online.
And so, and if we find that it is, becomes a problem, we can always come back and address that. We're just, yeah. So are there any questions from the public? Are there any hands raised, any emails? Any discussions on the council? Okay, so then I would um ask if there is a motion to introduce and continue the item to regularly schedule meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five for adoption of ordinance number four one seven dash two zero two five, creating chapter nine point three zero, title nine of the Riau del municipal code pertaining to sale of nit- nitrous oxide and further creating a comprehensive nitrous oxide ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion in the second. Motion carries five soil. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Frank. I will achieve. Council reports and communications.
Oh, right. Thank you. Um, thank you for reiterating the Blue Globe launch this Thursday at the Resource Center at uh five to seven P M. And this is open to the community, right?
Absolutely.
Come on down. It sounds like it's gonna be a really fun launch party. So I'll be there. I hope to see everybody else there too. Uh, five to seven P M. at the Resource Center. Um, the Chamber of Commerce monthly meeting is this Friday at noon in the Town of Scotia offices. The Resource Center is also hosting a garden party right over here at our community garden. That will be this Saturday, June seventh, from eleven A M. to one P M. I think weirdly there. It's a cute hold that you make tie-dye t-shirts, learn about bees. It's, it's fun. Yeah, they always have food. Um. The Resource Center is also hosting a bike rodeo, June fourteenth, from eleven A M. to one P M. at the Fire Hall. Now that one's really fun. I've been to that one every year that she's done it. Even though I'm the oldest person in the bike parade, I am there.
Okay.
And thank you.
Okay.
It's really fun. And it's, it's geared towards the youth of the community and bike safety. And they get little licenses right when they pass their safety course. I've even seen them handing out homeless, free homeless to every kid. Um, and it's just, it's a, it's a really fun thing. Um, my last report is to please spay and neuter your pets. It is kitten season. I don't care if you've got a stray cat, a feral cat, call me and I'll come get your cat. We'll get spayed. Um, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember, what, you're gonna ride your bicycle, Chief?
Corporal Landry will be there leading the parade on the bicycle.
Yes.
Thank you. Nice. Councilmember Moore?
Uh, nothing to report this week.
Councilmember Wilson?
I just, uh, only thing I had was a HSA meeting last week. And we adopted the annual budget for HSA. And with the price of the tipping fees and the particular, the the rest of the compo, the coffees, uh, isn't going to the bulk of the mill we're here anymore. They don't, they apparently don't want it for the reason they aren't taking it. But um your bill will probably will reflect a little bit of increase in your garbage bill or um bill filled, but it's not a huge thing at this time, but it's, the bigger ones come.
And um I was um on Friday, a part of the ribbon cutting for HTA's um hydrogen bus, which is a only hydrogen bus north of the Bay Area. That they had two different grants, but in total sixty-six million dollars. Eleven more buses are on, on order. They have tested the bus. They've gone up Berry Summit. They've gone down to Southern Humboldt. They know that it can make the range of every, everything it needs to make. The bus itself is beautiful. The wrap, uh, they have um USB ports between the two seats, every seat. Um, and it is really a huge, huge deal for Humboldt County. Uh, Humboldt County is, the HTA is like truly leading the way for the North Coast and a lot of, most all of California. Um, so that was a very proud moment. Um, the, the bus can run three hundred and twenty miles from Eureka to Mucaya and back. They put fifty-four hundred pounds of weight on the bus to simulate a full load. And it was able to do that eight point two miles um of hydrogen. And so the total range ended up being four hundred and thirty-five miles. Uh, so it's, it, it's really something that Humboldt County should be proud of and Humboldt County should really be proud of the transit, the HTA staff that went after those grants, that got them, that made all of this work. It was not easy and it took a long time. They're also putting in a, a permanent hydrogen fueling station. They currently have a, a temporary one, but they're putting in a, a permanent one that will be a lot, that will allow for the public, the members of the public to fuel their vehicles with hydrogen. It's gonna be one side, public facing, and the other side for the buses. So um it's not just about the mass transit. They're looking out for the whole, for everyone who has a hydrogen vehicle. So that's an awesome thing. And then on um Thursday, I and hopefully the city manager will be doing a leadership uh uh training and it was, it's not a training, it's just um kind of a conference at the River Lodge. Um, with the um, that's really what I was trying to uh bond here, Sherry. Um, at the River Lodge, talking about disaster preparedness and um economic development. Uh, the city of Fortuna members will be there, um city manager will be there. Um, the chief, Kurt Woodspur's last name on the C D app.
Uh, McCray.
Kurt McCray will be there, talking about the um disaster preparedness and hardening your home and all the things that people need to think about. And we're talking to people who are coming up and, and, and becoming leaders. So these are people who are very engaged, who wanna know what's happening. They wanna understand how to go about doing these things in a leadership position. So that will be on Thursday at the River Lodge. And that is on, that's my report.
We're, we're gonna talk to the um, about the gentleman.
Thank you. And thank you. So um I on, well, we could go Sunday. Um, I met with a candidate who is named Damon Connolly. He is currently an assembly member, um Calgary Assembly Member. He came up, he's ready for Senator Maguire's seat next year in November. And he came up and we did a walking tour of Riau del. He asked all of, you know, questions about the things we need, how we're going about it. He, we walked the trail, we walked down on the river, we walked over to the top, uh, seats. Cow fire property. The cow fire property. Um, we walked along the streets and we talked about Riau del and the things that Riau del needs and the things that Senator Maguire has done previously and what he hopes to continue to do for Riau del. And I thought that was really, um, it, it was important whether he um wins or not. What really struck me was that as a candidate, he came up and actually showed interest in Riau del. And so I just thought, he has already got a job. He's already a assembly member for Sonoma. So um anyway, I just wanted to report that out, that I had done that and I had talked to him and we had walked around Riau del and, and um given him kind of a, a heads up on what's going on here. So um that then, that's why I said all, was there anything else I, I forgot? So um that is my report. And so I guess I would ask if there is a motion to hear? So we have a motion. So a second, second. Being turned until June seventeen.